It is now 6:11. I'd like to call the January 9th meeting of the Woodbury Select Board to order. Adjustments to the Select Board agenda, please.
Adjustments. Brandy had something.
Brandy, please.
I would like to bring up something during an executive session.
Okay.
If we can add that to the end. Please and thank you. Yes, Skip Lindsey.
Got it. Sir.
Just wondering what's going to be discussed in executive session.
Oh, I was ready for that.
We have to have a reason.
I'll give you a quotation. It's probably, uh, uh, yeah, if it's negoti- the appoint- employment or evaluation of a public officer. Clear and imminent peril, exempt records, testimony from a parole. No, not that.
Contract.
Contracts, yeah.
Valuation?
Labor relations agreements, no, not really. Arbitration, mediation.
Skip, do you have something specific that you're most concerned about?
Yeah, because the law is very definitive on why you can enter an executive session.
Confidential attorney negotiation. I would say, um, it might fit under the appointment, employment or evaluation of a public officer. Although it's not, mm.
So is my, that was last minute, not today. I'd rather discuss it during executive session instead of making it as a break.
Yeah, except there's only, there are, you know, certain reasons why we can go into executive session. If it doesn't fall under that then. And usually when we go into executive session, we have to state the reason and the state statute that it falls under.
I'm fine with making it public. I will take the other person off.
Maybe we can just talk about it in the alphabet.
It's not an appointed official. It's a hiring. It's a hire. And it's the Select Board's hire, so.
It's a hiring. You mean, does it apply town employee? Well, then.
Right, but it's not elected. It's a hire. He was hired.
Yeah, it's a town employee. So we're discussing a town employee. So there is.
Evaluation of a public officer or employee.
Yes.
Yeah. One VSA, paragraph 313A3.
Other adjustments to the published agenda for the Select Board. Okay. Hearing none. Bills and payroll orders are all in progress and will be finished by the end of the meeting. Or after, just immediately after the meeting. We have signature approvals from three Select Board members for the December 27th meeting. And now we are open for public comment. Hearing none. We have the town clerk's report, please. Mrs. Jerky.
I talked with John Reed today, and the poor man now has COVID. But he told me to send him the town report stuff that I have ready. So I sent him, I don't know, six or eight different emails from the different organizations that have written up things that go into the town report. So he's working with those now. And Brendan and I were just going over the warning, and I left off one of the fire department's articles. Which is probably the big one because it's their operating expenses.
Well, yeah, there were three, but they put them, they made them into two, right? I mean, there were, well.
They were, they made them into three, but I think it should be four.
Well, it would have been, yeah. In the past, it used to be three, but now they've got the other one with the building, so that would be four if they didn't combine those two, but.
Yeah, the one that I left off was one for the $114,0057644, which the capital replacement fund is the $31,000. And then the operating expenses is $83,57644. Which I will... Does it matter which order their articles go in?
Well, that's what I wanted to, that's why I wanted to see a draft.
Yeah, I think so.
They have Article 1 is the 17850. And then Article 2 is the one that I have left off. Article 3 is the $85,000.
That doesn't matter. You can put it in the same order that they have.
Yeah, I think I'd use their order.
So I will leave it here.
And I think the wording on Article 9, the actual wording from the minutes, if I can find them again, it might be a little different, but.
I think it's pretty close.
Yeah, it's pretty close, but there was an exact wording that was approved by the board, so. September 26. Shall Woodbury hold its future annual town meetings on the Saturday preceding the first Tuesday in March?
In what minutes was that on, Diana?
September 26.
And I also got the report in from, I haven't read it yet. From AOT to certify the amount of mileage we have to the roads.
Oh, interesting.
Did we do away or add any of this past year?
No, and I actually sent something, you sent that to me, and I sent something on to them, but, um, but. No, we haven't added any.
Okay.
It's the same.
We just have to sign it and send it. Then they sign, they sign it and send it back, and then you can file it.
Okay. And I think other than the email I forwarded to about Elizabeth Shed, that's, I think that's all I have.
Okay.
So I will put that other fireman's article in the warning, and then do you want me to send you an email so you can come in and sign it?
Yes, please.
Yeah, well, we should.
We have to review it.
We should, yeah. We can, when's our next meeting?
Two weeks.
Yeah. I don't have a 2023 calendar.
It's the 23rd, 14 days from today.
Oh, that's gonna be too long, yeah.
Yeah, because our due date to have it to, a hard copy to the printers is the 23rd.
Yeah, can't do it.
We will be having a special budget meeting, and there's no reason we couldn't have that as part of the agenda.
Yeah, I agree.
Because after I add that article in there tomorrow, I can scan it and send it to you guys as an attachment. But I'll let you know that I have it ready.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, let's see. That got us onto town report status in some ways.
And we, uh, would this be a good time to just read off what positions are going to be up for election?
That's a good idea.
Well, if we have a town treasurer, three years, I believe we have an incumbent. We, you're gonna run, right? Yeah, yeah, okay. Select Board member, we're gonna need a Select Board member, we're gonna need a lister. I think we're gonna need two auditors. Well, I think, I think we're gonna need two lister positions on here, Robin, because I think Ron's position is up for three years, and then there's an empty one for Mary Ganzemmi who retired during the year.
Okay.
So I don't know whether hers will be a, that one will be a two-year or one-year.
Yeah, we have to see what the timing is of those.
Uh, electric delinquent taxes, I believe there's an incumbent. Grand juror, town law agent, we might have done away with those.
We haven't.
Maybe not.
That I know of, we have not. We have not.
We have not, what do you mean?
Not been electing those positions.
Yeah, last year it was not on the.
I think those are two that were.
I don't think that.
Do you have the town report, Diana? It would be on the, um, you have it here. Yeah, because I think, um.
It's not on there for last year. It was on there for 2020, but not for 2021.
I think Steve Freihoffter advised that we get rid of those.
Don't have to do those anymore.
Both of those positions.
That's my memory, but, you know, I'm not a.
Yep, but if they weren't in that town report.
If they weren't in last year's, I think it was the first year that we eliminated it.
We eliminated those positions.
Another thing, I seem to think that I was told at some seminar or something that we no longer have to have those two articles. Uh, will the voters authorize and empower the Select Board to borrow money on the credit of the town? You know, the Select Board has that authority, so it doesn't really need to be voted on. And the other one was, will the voters authorize and empower the Select Board to borrow money to pay current expenses in anticipation of taxes raised and uncollected? I'll check back and see whether those still have to be on there.
Who is writing up the dedications for Peter and David?
I think John said he would work on those.
You said John?
John Reed said he would work on those, yeah. So anyways, Cemetery Commissioner, one, one position. I don't know who's running for that. Library Trustee has four positions, and I don't know who's, who the incumbents are or whether they're running again. Hazen Union School District Director.
Steve Freihoffter's up for that one this year.
Right. I hope he's gonna run again, but I don't know. Maybe get around to asking.
Okay.
So that's it. Lots of fun opportunities. Right, Skip? If you're not at town meeting, you could be voted something. Well.
We're not gonna throw you under the bus. Same for that.
The open floor town meeting.
That's different. Okay, so we're making progress on, on this, which is good. All right, um, can we move on to the town treasurer's report, please?
So I, as we briefly graze over. So I did go with the same supplier for town reports, um, in order to hold that spot. I threw my signature on there and let them know we will be going with them again. So, over the past two weeks, you have a balance sheet, financial statements, and due to, due from. So income that came in, well, you know. Because we're just tipping the beginning of the month. So cash receipts, we took in $370 and 1 cent. Dog licenses, prepaid taxes. Delinquencies, we took in $10,664.48. Payroll over the last two weeks, $11,834.96. Accounts payable, $15,849.34. I have sent out and made copies, Sullivan, Sullivan and Powers. Gave us a draft of the CPA audit. I'm going to the Select Board to review it, and then I need to sign off on it.
The memo, the email from Tom.
Yep.
Beers.
Is here.
Suggested that you make sure that you're, you know what you're signing off on, because there's a lot of stuff on there that he thinks might not actually be things that you are responsible for. I forget what he said, but.
Letter's right here, so we'll look at it.
Yeah, you know, I don't feel all that comfortable. And not that I'm the one signing off, but if we're supposed to review it, a lot of this language, you know, if, I would need a, um.
A primer.
To, you know, it's just too, too full of legalese and different accounting terms that I don't, I don't have the knowledge to, to know what are, you know, what this thing is all about and what to watch out for.
And, and our, it would be nice to have our auditors weigh in as far as what they think about it.
So that I can incorporate an email to hopefully reach out to the auditors and ask their input. And, and group you in an email.
Who handed me this? Michael, was this your copy?
Well, no, it's just here for the tables. It has Chris's name on it, but it's here for all of us. Okay.
Um, other than that. I'm working on the budget, and you have a draft budget number two. And then hopefully we can set a date between sooner than, to, um, so that it's finalized for the printers, which is due 20, the 23rd.
Do we want to try to set a date right now, or?
Yes, please.
Want to do it like next Monday night?
I have a planning commission meeting that night.
17th, when we're open at the office, so you can just do it in the other room.
That's a Tuesday?
Yep.
Yeah, I think that would work. There's something, there's like a fuzzy red flag in my head, but I can't figure out what it, what it, why.
Well, let's do a tentative.
Well, let's, let's say, I'll, yeah. Seems like that should work.
So 17th.
6:00 PM.
6:00 PM. Great. Okay.
Where's our road commissioner?
Ms. Brandy, do you have anything else that you want to bring up while we have a moment?
Nope, that's it.
Okay. Great. We do not have our road commissioner here, so we can't really have that conversation.
Can we?
Go ahead, Ms. Jerky. Yes, please.
We have gotten a request for an abatement. And I'm reading over the stuff, and it says it has to be worn in the same five dates, personal and posted. What does that mean?
And it say what?
It says it has to be worn in the same five personal and posted notices as required for the Board of Civil Authority.
That means the places you have to post it.
So I have to post it for five days before we hold the meeting?
No, we have to post it in five places. The post office, the bulletin board, the blah, 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 the five places that we don't have, so we can't always do five places.
Front porch forum and the website would be two other places.
Right, yep. Yeah, but. It's always supposed to be five places, and we don't really have five places, but. Yeah, so that's what that means. Did it say anything about the length of time to, it has to be posted?
That's what I was wondering about those five days.
Oh, it said five days?
Yeah.
Oh.
Right?
Yeah. Saying five day personal and posted notice as in.
Do we have a copy of that, Ms. Jerky? I'm sorry. I haven't, I have not seen it. So.
We're looking at the guidance on.
No, 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 this is the Secretary of State's office.
So five days personal, that, that, to me, that would read that you, whoever is requesting the abatement, you would have to let them know when it was scheduled, five days ahead of time or beforehand. That, that's my thought on that. I don't know if that's correct or not. And then posted within the public posting, does it say personal and public, or?
It says the five days personal. And then posted notice as required by the Board of Civil Authority. I'll call Secretary of State's office.
All right. I'm sorry, Ms. Jerky. I don't have an answer for that either.
Okay.
So you all will be invited.
I wouldn't mind seeing a copy of that at some point.
It's a whole book on abatement.
No, just the specific abatement request.
That whole, oh, we don't have it in writing.
It technically should have been an errors in omission last year, and it was missed.
No, that's, that's not really true.
Okay.
But.
His place burnt down.
We'll explain, we'll explain it in the note.
I think I already know what we're talking about. I'm sorry. Good. All right, we are going to skip the road commissioner's report because we do not have someone to give it.
I can tell you a little bit about what that is about, because I did discuss that with Alfie and Greg last week when we worked on the budget, highway budget. But, um, I really wanted him to, to bring it up before the Select Board rather than me.
That's better.
I think that we should wait then.
We could wait, okay.
We should wait. Okay. We have a Callis Court decision regarding horses, but our question is whether or not we should be considering a large animal ordinance.
This was the thing that Chuck wanted to talk about.
That Chuck wanted to talk about. So Chuck, are you with us?
Could you, Jonah, if you see this?
All right. All right, Chuck, you are as loud as we can make you. And you are on for anything you want to discuss about this.
Well, I'd like to know what the Select Board thinks about that. What East Callis has done.
I haven't seen the actual ordinance that Callis has written up, but I do know that it was written up specifically to deal with this particular person and their horses. That was the sole reason that that ordinance happened, because of the ongoing troubles that Callis had for many, for quite a few years with this particular person, who now lives in Woodbury or has property in Woodbury and also has horses in Woodbury, so.
Or could.
Or could, yeah.
If she gets her horses back.
It's been problems since she's been there with them horses. They've been all over our lawn, shedding on it and everything else.
Yeah.
Tearing all but flowers up.
We've had problems in Woodbury with the same horses.
What's that?
We've had problems in Woodbury with the same horses, I agree.
That's right. In the road and everywhere else, tearing up people's lawns, Larry Gilbert, little Larry Gilbert. I think that the town of Woodbury should strongly think about adopting the same, the same amendment or whatever it is.
It's an ordinance.
Because Callis has already done the battling for you. It seems like a win-win situation for town of Woodbury all the way around.
I, I would tend to agree with you, Chuck. I know that, um, back a few years ago when we had a pair of horses get loose and one was killed right in the village, that Skip Lindsey, who happens to be here tonight, did rewrite our own town animal ordinance to include large animals. I don't remember the text in it, and it, we never had our animal control officer kind of review it and okay it, so it's sort of a, in limbo as a draft at this point. It was never really adopted by the Select Board, um.
Well, in my opinion, I would like to see that thrown out and adopt the one that Callis has got. I mean, they've already been to court, they've already done the legal work on it. If it works for one town, there's no reason it had no work for another.
Yep. Yeah, the fact that they've done all the work putting it, with the language and all, I, I kind of did the work for us.
And the court supported it.
It did, and I can't, I can't see how you could miss by adopting it.
Right.
We just need people to tell us, Chuck.
So what do you need, a petition? That's what I'm looking for. I want to figure out what I gotta do.
Just people to show some interest.
I have interest.
Interest? Do you have interest?
I have interest, I, but, I, I mean, my read of the, I haven't read the ordinance, but I've read the article.
No, I just gave, I gave him. That's for you. I'll think of this one.
This is the Callis.
It's pretty simple, yeah.
Yeah, but my read of.
Who am I listening to now?
Oh, it's Jonah, Chuck.
Who?
Jonah, your neighbor.
Oh, hey, how you doing?
Good, how you doing? My, my read of the decision, though, was that the law's not complete because it doesn't, it doesn't speak to remedy.
There, the, the Callis is gonna be working on their, making those changes to their ordinance, and we can take advantage of that, too, since it won't be tomorrow that we adopt this.
Right.
Right.
So Jonah, tell me how you feel about it.
Um, I'm, I'm, you know, having just read it, I, I certainly think that something, we need to have some approach around it. It wasn't clear to me in the, in the little bit of research I've done, whether, you know, there are state laws that apply here as well, from my reading of state laws, and so I don't know how that works. And whether, if, if we're adopting an ordinance, are we, are we taking any pressure off the state to be managing some of this?
Well, last summer when they were loose playing down by the town office, we called the state police and they wouldn't come out.
They wouldn't.
I wouldn't expect the state to do anything to help.
Yeah.
Sorry.
No, no, I, I'm not, I just, that's why I'm bringing it up, you know.
And our animal control officer is not running again.
Right, right.
Oh, no.
So I think some, 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 anything we can take.
Is that Kim, Robin?
Yes.
Anything we can take from a town that already has fees, whether it's zoning violation, dog violation, that the town gets some policies in place, um, so that we can start having upper hand.
If, if we don't have an animal control officer, do we have any way of forcing this?
Not at the moment.
Not at the moment.
We'll be looking for somebody to be the animal control officer.
Add that to the list of potential jobs.
You didn't read that one out.
Yeah, I'm sorry to hear that.
Those are appointments instead of elections, so.
Right.
You probably won't let the officer carry a big stick either, right?
What stick do you want, Chuck?
Well, I would best not say that right now.
Gotcha.
Yeah, I'm certainly in favor of there being, you know, having been, um, having been affected by that, by this, this problem, um, yeah, I'm, I'm in favor of there being, of the town having a, a, an ordinance around this so that it's clear to, I, 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 I will read this, I hadn't read it yet. I, you know, one thing for me is we're, we're, we are a rural community, and I want to make sure we're not, you know, this is a repeated situation that Callis was responding to. And we've had it here in Woodbury with this particular individual, but I want to make sure we're not penalizing somebody who's, you know, otherwise a responsible livestock owner, who, you know, has an occasional challenge of, of an animal getting out, you know. Where, you know, we're not writing it into our laws, you know, we're pretty reasonable at this point, but I don't want it to be in our ordinance that somebody's unduly punished. I certainly, I certainly think we need to have, we need to have something, because if that keeps going on, someone's gonna get hurt.
Without an, an ordinance, there's no way that we can enforce anything, and.
I got my hand up.
Good, we're listening.
You know, I, I've been around Woodbury all my life, so born there, grew up. You know, I, I've been around Woodbury all my life, so born and grew up there, and I've been around animals a lot. And if animals are fenced in decent, and they got enough to eat, and they got water, they won't roam far. They like a full belly, and when they're up there and they're trying to live on fucking halders and corn cobs and everything else, you ain't gonna keep them in that pasture up there, when it's chewed right down to nothing. So, you know, and if, if the person that owns them is not responsible enough or smart enough to figure that out, then it seems to me that we've gotta step up and do something about it, and I don't mean feed them.
This ordinance says under item three prohibition, "The owner of livestock shall not allow, permit, or suffer such livestock to run at large in the town of," well, "This prohibi- prohibition shall not include situations where the owner of the livestock has taken reasonable measures to contain the animal."
I believe that to be true, I, I think that's the way that it should be.
That's the check.
Happening, it happening again, then something's gotta be done.
Well, we've had fair warning, you know, just looking what's happened in Callis over the last three or four years and uh.
And what's happened in Woodbury the last two years.
Two years.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and it happened in these.
You know it's coming.
Really, the same person, oh geez, oh.
Yeah, the same person.
So.
You know it's coming.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we have an opportunity to.
Take advantage of.
Nip it with butt.
Unappropriate ordinance. Alright, well, it's under consideration, yeah.
I would like to be kept posted on this, and as you all know, I'm in Florida, and I would like to know, I would like to uh, be kept in the loop on this deal.
Yeah, that's fair enough.
You'd like to what?
Kept in the loop.
I'm afraid he's gonna shoot right by me and then I get home and I'd have to fight all summer to get you guys straight now.
No, I don't think you have to do any uh, arm twisting on, on our end, um, but it just, it might, you know, it might take us a, a meeting or two to, to get this thing.
To get it, to get it set up and reviewed.
It'll be a while before she gets them back, but I would like to have things in place so that it could be uh, policed when it is in place.
Yeah, fair enough, yeah.
And I, I agree with Jonah that, you know, that people have horses, they're animals, they get out once in a while, it's Vermont, you know what, suck it up, but when it's an everyday occurrence, that's something else.
And usually, you know, if an owner's horses or cows get out and they might do something to somebody's garden or whatever, usually the owner of the animals will make amends to the person that was, whose property was damaged, but that's not true in this case.
A good Vermonter would understand it and would.
Yes, I'm talking about a good Vermonter, not somebody who just doesn't take any responsibility at all.
Actually show up to get their animals.
Then, then it's a big problem.
Yeah.
Well, if that's the end of the conversation, I would like to thank you for your, your time and let me speak and um, I'll look forward to hearing from you.
Yeah, and I'm sorry Chuck, the equipment didn't work tonight, I don't know why, but um.
I think Skip wants to speak before Chuck may want to hear.
Yep, go ahead, so, wait, hold on, Chuck, don't go, Skip Lindsey is gonna speak.
So I agree with Chuck, and with Jonah too, that we should have this ordinance on.
Move that phone, post it to him, would ya?
Can you, what did you, Jonah, thank you, thanks man.
So on a, on a different, different note, but still in the animal realm, uh, there's another person up on Old Quarry Road who has vicious dogs, okay, and Woodbury does have an ordinance for vicious dogs, and what these dogs do, if you take a hike up at Old Quarry Road, they'll come out and they'll bark at you, they'll snarl at you, and one day I was uh, doing a nine-one-one address up there and I had to defend myself with my wheel to keep these dogs away from me. So what I'd like to do is have the owner of these dogs informed of the existing Woodbury ordinance, which says if dogs threaten you, just come out running at you, barking, and you're afraid that you're going to get bitten, then the animal control officer, or in this case, if we don't have one, this.
We still have one.
Still have one currently.
The select board should intervene and let this person know of the ordinance and enforce it as much as they can. It's just, it's.
Fair enough.
Not that they have to bite you, it's just you, you have to feel.
Threatened.
Right.
Well, I had to, I went up to, on that road at that location to try to measure the setback for a shed that's been an issue.
Sure.
And I didn't dare get out of the car, cause they just ran up, I was just, was afraid they were gonna jump on my car and I certainly wasn't gonna get out and see if they were gonna jump on me, so yeah, I agree.
You know, not armed, you know, thinking that I didn't have to be, just going up there doing a nine-one-one address, but absent, absent that, you know, we should alert her that, you know, we do have an ordinance and that if someone feels threatened, then the dogs could be taken away.
Has anybody contacted Kim Silk?
I don't know, secondarily, I believe these dogs aren't registered either, so if they're not registered or licensed, I guess.
Licensed, correct, they can be impounded.
Then, chances are they don't have any rape, rapey shots, and so if someone gets bitten, they run the risk of, you know, contracting.
Okay.
Can I say something here?
Sure.
Yep, you're good, go ahead Chuck, can I have that back so you can be by the microphone?
Hang on one second Chuck, hang on one second, we're gonna move you back, hang on one second.
Alright Chuck, go ahead.
Well, if Skip's done, I'd like to say, yeah, my wife used to walk that circle all the time, up Old Quarry Road down to Caber Road and back to the house, and she doesn't dare to do it now, and Rita Richardson is another one that won't walk that route because of those two dogs, and I went up to there last fall just before we left, had my arm hanging out the window and one of them nipped at my fingers.
Oh geez.
And she hollered and got them back, but I'll tell you what, the next time I go up through there, they nipped at my fingers, and they ain't gonna be good.
It's okay, just don't go any further. We got it.
But yes, I agree with Skip one hundred percent, something needs to be done and they need to be, they, if they're running loose, they ain't supposed to be running loose, they're supposed to be on lease, and if they're out there running up down that Old Quarry Road, boy, I don't know, to some people that would be fair game.
Alright Chuck, thank you for your comments, we appreciate it.
Alright. So, is this subject done?
Unless we have other comments.
I was, uh, I was looking at the third page of this ordinance, Chuck, I'll send you a copy. It looks like it was a fairly quick process, the uh, board in Callis had had an agenda item at a regular select board meeting on July twelfth, July twenty-first, they signed the ordinance, they posted it in public places, notice of adoption published in the Times Argus on July twenty-fourth, and uh, within forty days of adoption of an ordinance, five percent of the voters may submit a petition, blah, 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 they, so, it looked like it was adopted uh, effective September tenth, so it's not a long process.
Good, good.
If we decide to.
I, I will orchestrate a, a petition, I can do it from here, but um.
Yeah, I, I think the petition was to appeal it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, petition is only for appealing it.
So I, I would like to make a motion that we start the adoption process and get a word document from Callis and, and uh, start working on our adoption process.
Well, second that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, so Chuck, do you hear that?
I did, thank you very much.
So, we're, we're.
I appreciate it.
We're gonna start making, making some progress on this, we'll have to make some modifications, but we're gonna start working on it.
Alright, good deal.
Oh, yep.
I appreciate your time and like I say.
Chuck, don't leave yet. Chuck, don't leave yet.
Okay.
Skip has some.
Skip has one more thing.
Uh, just, just a question, so, what should we do about these dogs, how, how do I proceed? To make, do I make a formal complaint to the select board?
You do, so that we can inform Kim Silk and then we can move forward.
And you can call Kim Silk yourself.
I know, but I'm just a citizen.
Oh yeah, we're, we're powerful.
Okay.
Okay.
Chuck, what I'll do is.
Yes, send something in writing.
Chuck, what I'll do is I'll put together a letter and send it to email and uh, take a look at it and uh, we can both sign it. Okay, Jonah wants to take a look at it and sign it. Alright. Alright, thanks Chuck. Alright.
Sorry Skip.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So you can shut this thing down.
Yep.
Skip, did you see this article? From the Times Argus? About the horses, okay, here's a, I made some copies, nobody's here for that.
I seen walking through my yard.
Well, this, it kinda gives you a sense of legal take on it and, and.
Right, that's more about the ordinance.
About the court decision.
Alright, that's supportive of the ordinance.
Alright, and then if you'd like, Robin could send you the latest email message from the caller two.
Yeah.
Which is inter- interesting in itself.
From the lady who owns the horses.
Owns the horses.
Yeah, maybe, maybe you should get it too.
I, I wouldn't mind seeing that.
What's your email address?
Maybe we should just post, maybe we should just post it.
I don't think so, wanna look at it, Jonah?
Oh, you have it?
Yeah, you could just look at this.
Just take a look at the draft. Okay, uh, other business, any updates on the Nichols Dam Road?
I don't have any updates on that.
I, I just uh, did go by there the other day, Saturday, and uh, so, I'm kind of surprised that they just went ahead and did all that without checking with anybody and just assuming that it's their road. There's a gate, there's signs, like they said, there's signs that say fishing this way, and then you go down the road and there's a snowmobile trail that says ice fishing this way, um, that gate was open, and it also had some times, uh, a sign that said that the gate was open between some time, close in another time.
Five AM and eight PM. Yeah, and those are the same signs that are down at the dam and at that um, original gate at the bottom of the hill, um, and although the directional signs about where to access the pond for ice fishing this winter, those are new, um.
I'd like to see, if you could send me that email you got from Steve Fraser.
Sure, yeah, I can send that to you. Yeah, I mean, um.
Do we have any plans, are we gonna hire an attorney to determine whether that's a town road or?
Uh, well, that would, we would have to prove that the town was a, you know, um, adopted as a class four road, we'd have to find that, because that's what we're saying it is.
Yeah, but there, just because somebody else says it's not, why is it our duty to, to prove that it is our road and it has been our road all these years?
We don't really have any evidence.
Well, there is another legal, there is, if we wanna go this route, there is another legal strategy, and Steve Fraser mentioned it, it's called um, uh, there's two terms which I can never remember, but he mentioned it in his letter.
Well, there's the right of way.
Well, there's that, you know.
Right.
Where it's, first of all, it's been used as a public road for years, I mean, I've been going there since nineteen fifty-four and that was the road that people used to access the pond, um, the other road was already long forgotten, um, but um, and in the old, the Vtrans maps up until nineteen eighty-nine, the old road that they reopened, that's the Skidoo Trail, that was, that's what the state declared as the town road.
Town road.
Yes.
You really think so?
If you knew.
Cause I thought those, those maps were kind of.
But do you know the lay of the roads there? I do.
They're wonky.
And, and the, the road that they had designated up until like nineteen eighty-nine is the old historical road. They didn't have the, the road, the other road there at all, um, so.
And this is what, is this the one they're using for the snowmobile trail now?
Yes, yeah, yeah, so, you know, and those Vtrans, I mean, I don't trust state maps that much. Cause they're based on information that other people give them, they don't, and you know, the Vtrans maps are, I consider them the same, I mean, they were using a, an old generic map that didn't even, um, you know, it was like the eighteen seventy-eight map that we have down at the town office, which, that's basically the map that they were using for um, both the, you know, the shape of Nichols and East Long, it's.
And it's still not correct, right.
On the ground.
So, um.
Was Woodbury Granite ever up in that area?
Hmm, no, no.
There are some boutique quarries that are in there, but they're ancestral.
And you know, the, the old Buck Lake Road is more, um, where all of the quarries, there's another one called Corkscrew Road, yeah, that, um, and a lot of the quarries were located along, what's the Stratton Road and Hardwick, and then it turns into Buck Lake Road and Woodbury, and goes through to the Buck Lake.
To Buck Lake, yeah, there are a number of small quarries on it, but they were never really productive. And those never show up on a map.
I've been wanting to check in with Hardwick Electric to see if they have any historical, you know, was that road built um, to, for access to the dam for the electrical company, um, um, but you know, the town can claim it as a town road through this uh, term that Stephen Fraser mentions, one of them is public use and the fact that the town has in the past worked the road to upkeep it. So, and that, but that's a long, expensive legal battle, and if the town wants to do that, that's, um, that's up to the town.
I don't know why, I, well, you say we don't have any evidence, but we haven't looked for any evidence.
No, we haven't, and we can look, um, and they haven't provided any evidence that it's a private road either. It's just what they say, um, John Meyer did mention something that in the time of the um, nine-one-one listings, that um, the select board agreed at that point in time that um, it was a private road, and that's what the road sign says, it doesn't, it says private on the, the Nichols Dam Road. So, I don't, I wasn't on the select board then, I don't remember when that happened, um, um, you know, so.
I looked at that sign the other day and I didn't notice this.
So that's another route to go, um, if the select board agreed at some point in time, we'd have to find the minutes that, that that happened at, um, you know, so, so that would be, actually be a mark against the town if the select board at that point in time agreed that it was a private road, um.
That was probably not a decision that was specifically made, the whole nine-one-one road naming process was, um, yeah, it's a little.
Well, according to John Meyer, there was a select board meeting where the select board did agree that that road was.
Oh, really, I didn't hear that part.
Does it say in the nine-one-one map that it's a private road?
Yes.
Have to look at that.
Yes.
Really?
Yes.
I haven't seen that.
Yep, I don't know if this is the nine-one-one listing, but um.
It's town highway thirteen?
Yeah.
And Matt Michael there, is is a legend that will tell you whether it's a private road or a class three, class four?
According to the Vermont Atlas viewer, when you look at the E nine-on-one map, it is classified as a private road.
Here on the listing that the town has for town roads and private roads, Nichols Pond Road is listed as a private road. And then over here on the Woodbury Town Roads, Town Highway thirteen, the Nichols Dam Road is listed as a Woodbury Town Road. So, you know, again, um, you know, our own, this document, and I don't know where this came from.
I've never seen that, sorry.
It's, it's actually up in the town office.
I'm not aware of that one.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's been around a while, I think it's probably since, I don't know, it might be even before nine-one-one.
So, so this listing lists Nichols Pond Road as both a town road and a private road.
Not terribly helpful.
No.
But Nichols Pond Road is the one that comes from Hardwick, right?
Yes.
The main road, that's definitely class four.
Yeah.
And there's another.
Although here, Diana, again on this listing that hangs up at the town office, Nichols, or maybe, you know, it just says Nichols Pond, it doesn't say a road, but, so that's why I'm just saying that the town records are really not all that.
Useful.
Useful either, so, but we do, the town could, you know, use the argument of the use, the public use of the road and the fact that the town has maintained the road somewhat reluctantly since I've been on the select board, but, those are two arguments that there are precedents in in legal work for a town to claim that as a town road. But that would be probably kind of a long drawn out legal battle that would cost the town quite a bit of money.
I don't know why the town should have to pay money to prove something that's ours, it's always been ours.
That's because of lawyers. And we could argue our own case if we wanted, I guess. And you know, just as being a camp owner up there and being aware of the, and I've mentioned this at other select board meetings, the dam area, which this road, whether it's a town road or not, the dam and the property there is private. It's not a town-owned dam and the property where the dam is located is not town-owned. But that place during the drivable year, times of year is a very obnoxious.
Popular party spot.
Party spot, people driving in and out at all times of the night and blasting their truck stereos till two AM in the morning. A lot of heavy drinking, shooting, drug dealing, blah, blah, blah. And there's no, and the reason we put up those signs, and the town was a part of that, yeah, the town was a part of those, the wording of those signs is, is so that there could be some enforcement there, like the the sign that says that the road is closed or the dam is closed from eight PM in the evening to five AM in the morning, was so that some, a cop or whatever could go down there, policeman, police person, could go down there and enforce that. But the police don't go there. So, the the camp owners are really fed up with what goes on there and this has gone on back in the late seventies, I had a car vandalized on the dam and it was pretty much, I just got hauled away for scrap metal. I mean, I would have helped them vandalize it, that car was nothing but a pain in the butt anyway. But that's the kind of behavior that's gone on there for years.
Well, there's a place like that up by Nick, uh, by Cole's Pond too. It's only been about five years since these people bought it, but they come up on the weekends and they've got cars parked on the road, they've got several RVs, there's no zoning up there, so they've got a bunch of different RVs and and shooting off fireworks and loud music and that's annoying too.
Yeah, but if they're on their own property, then that's a different issue, I guess. So, I just want folks to know why that gate is there, because the camp owners are tired of nobody being able to do anything about what goes on up there. You know, it's totally isolated, so people feel that, and there really isn't any enforcement at all to, you know, one of the camp owner closest to the dam has, you know, initially when the dam was repaired, and those kind of terms of the use were were posted. You know, they would go down there and ask, tell people that, you know, it's time to leave and some people would leave and other people would be, get really nasty about it, so most camp owners up there don't really feel that they want to risk trying to let people know that it's time to go home. But the whole issue with the road, you know, it would be really nice to resolve that, whether it is public or private. There's another road off the North Road that is kind of a similar situation where the actual town road, and it was Steve Fraser that cleared this up for me, is actually cabled off and got totally destroyed by a logger a few years ago and the road that people use now, again, for many, many years, is a private road. But it, and the town has never maintained it at all, camp owners have. And I think it was originally built by E.B. Hyde to use for logging. So, it's another private road that's publicly used because the public road has been so badly trashed that you can't even drive over it anymore and somebody's cabled it off because it hasn't been used for years. And then again, in my experience, being up there as a camp owner, that road has existed ever since I can remember. And now that I'm an old timer, my memory goes back at least fifty years, so. And in case of those roads, probably sixty years.
So that cable is not.
The cable is illegal, but it's.
Illegal, but nobody brought, nobody's taking it down.
Nobody's taking it down.
Until somebody runs into it, gets killed, oh well.
Well, the road is pretty much undrivable anyway, so I don't think there's much to worry about. But that is the town road, according, and Steve Fraser is very good at this stuff, he's a surveyor and has done a lot of roadwork.
May we move on to West Woodbury Cemetery, please? Any updates?
I think I reported last.
You did, last week you reported.
I had been at at a meeting and I didn't realize, I don't know if I told you, I think I did say that I didn't realize until we were leaving the meeting that I was told that the cemetery commission was never in favor of that whole project. But the select board decided to let them go ahead with it.
Well, that's not totally true, they were not in favor of it and then the select board agreed to, that the town would cover the cost, which, and you know, any of their concerns, the select board agreed for the town to take responsibility for those and mostly it was the cost involved in in the surveying, et cetera.
Which we covered.
Yeah, and so at that point, the cemetery commission was okay with moving forward.
Or at least that's what they told us.
Well, the surveyor came up with what she thought they wanted and it turned out to be not really a good plan, just filling up the whole place with these little five-by-five lots. So, I actually sat down with the plan, with the survey and kind of tried to design something that was gonna be a little nicer looking, more in line with, you know, a country cemetery. So, she's redoing the survey now and hopefully the, I mean, there'll be like twenty full, full-size lots and forty little lots with some rows in between them and hopefully that'll satisfy people.
Wasn't there testing done so you could only go so deep on part of it?
No, it was the.
Reasoning for the cremation area?
Was the well shield.
Yeah, there was a, there's a well involved.
There is a depth issue as well, you're not wrong about that, there's a depth issue as well as the well shield issue.
We don't have that information though.
Our surveyor should have done it, it should be in that report.
So you did send that information to the surveyor?
Don't know. Okay, so we'll see the redesigned plan that maybe makes the cemetery commission and the folks from West Woodbury happier-ish. Uh, any CV fiber updates, Michael?
Yes, I can give some CV fiber updates. So, I contacted Karen Koteki, the woman who's working on the permitting for CV fiber. And I I told her that Rathburn Road was a private road, so she'll be, you know, finding out who the landowners are and dealing with the permits with the private landowners. And I mentioned that nobody had come to meet with Alfie at all to review the different sections of road where they want to put in underground cable. And she told me that the person who's doing the contracting work for that would be contacting Alfie. I haven't asked Alfie if he's been, that's happened yet. I think I spoke with Karen the Tuesday after our last select board meeting. And.
Meeting was on a Tuesday.
Yeah, and she agreed that we probably, you know, she had done kind of a blanket permit application and speaking with Alfie and just, you know, for the, as it's kind of modeled after a driveway access, it seemed to make sense to have an application for each road and each section of road where there would be underground cable, so there would be a record of where that stuff is. She agreed to that and so I printed out some applications for Alfie, I'll drop them off at the garage.
So she submitted the additional application?
No, she's, she, she handed it over to the contractor who'll be doing the work, who will, who was supposed to schedule a meeting with Alfie to look at all of this pieces of road where they want to put in the underground cable and, you know, have a, have a discussion with Alfie about it and then on the application, the terms that Alfie would want to have for them, for the cable will be, will be written on the applications. So, and I don't know whether Alfie's been contacted or not by the contractor. I also received from CV fiber to twenty twenty-two report to member towns, I'll send that to everybody, but I could quickly read it if you would like or depending on our timeframe.
Is that something that they, that should go in the town report?
It could, that would be, this would be a great thing to have in the town report, actually, yeah. And you know, when I spoke with Karen, they're, they're already, they're working on the top of Foster Hill, not, I mean, they're working on the Callis end of that road, I don't know what it's called in Callis, but, um, so that's one that she definitely wanted the contractor to get in touch with Alfie on because they're already laying cable along that road and they have to go into Woodbury a little bit down Foster Hill Road, the cable, the underground.
Good luck avoiding all those big old maples.
Right. Yeah, so what did I, it's like three or four paragraphs, so.
Yep, please go ahead.
CV fiber twenty twenty-two report to member towns, CV fiber is a nonprofit municipal entity governed by volunteer delegates who are appointed by our twenty-member Central Vermont towns, of which Woodbury is a part. Our aim is to provide access to fast, dependable and affordable internet service with the first priorities being those who are unserved or underserved. CV fiber will provide homes with speeds ranging from a hungr- hundred MBPS, whatever that stands for.
Megabits per second.
Per second, thank you, to two gigs and businesses with speeds ranging from one gig to ten gigs. Speeds will always be symmetrical, for example, a hundred megabits per second download and a hundred megabits per second upload for the best interactive experience for education, telemedicine, conference calls, business gaming and more. Providing rural Vermont with this level of service will enhance education, enable our workforce, create opportunities and support the state's economy. The one thousand two hundred mile CV fiber community broadband network will cost an estimated sixty million dollars and take approximately three years to construct, provided funding, material and labor are available. It is anticipated that federal grants will fund fifty to sixty percent of the construction with the remainder funded through debt financing. CV fiber cannot receive town tax dollars and will support its ongoing operations with subscription revenues. Initial construction started in December twenty twenty-two. CV fiber plans to construct up to five hundred and fifty miles of its community broadband network in twenty twenty-three. To keep costs to subscribers down, thirteen member towns, of which Woodbury is also a part, have allocated eight hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars of Town American Rescue Plan Act ARPA fund funds to CV fiber. These funds are matched dollar for dollar by the Vermont Community Broadband Board for a total contribution of one point six seven million. Town allocations are used within the town and directly benefit residents. The Vermont Community Broadband Board is extending the dollar-for-dollar match through May twenty twenty-three, providing each of our member towns the opportunity to allocate up to a hundred thousand dollars for a total contribution of two hundred thousand dollars. Please contact me for more information. Let's see. By providing symmetrical, high-speed broadband access, CV fiber and the other Vermont community, communication union districts are closing the rural digital divide, blah, blah, blah. So.
In the record, great.
So if you want to send that to Robin, if you get that by email.
I'll send it to everybody concerned, yeah.
Thank you, Michael. Alright, so, excuse me, for budget, we have a meeting that is now set up on the seventeenth at six PM and the town office.
So who's gonna write the select board report for the town report?
There we go, that's our next, that's our next big task.
Usually the chair does.
Yep. And I'm willing to do that as long as I get some guidance. Well.
You could read the report from the last one, last time, which I wrote.
Got it, so.
Just whatever you want to share.
Okay.
More or less. What I usually do is go over the select board minutes and kind of make a list, kind of refreshes my memory of what happened over the year. And kind of make it, you know, make it from that.
Okay, well done. So, Chris Cody is writing the select board report. Which should be to you by the, what, late this week, good enough?
Next week is okay.
Late this week, okay, or no? Not okay.
I'm fine with that, I'll leave Robin to.
So, if you have it later in the week, this week, is that good enough? Alright, can be done. Got it. Okay.
Did we agree, was there adjustment to the agenda to go into executive session?
There was.
I'll make a motion that we go into executive session.
Can you state?
Pursuant to one VSA's paragraph three hundred and thirteen, parentheses A, parentheses three.
So we would be.
At the request of the town treasurer.
Right, is there anyone else that we want to invite to the executive, executive session?
The town treasurer.
And this is to discuss a town employee?
Alright, so all those in favor of moving into executive session?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so, the Woodbury Select Board has moved into executive session at seven twenty on one nine.